I'd like to call the meeting to order. Six o'clock roll call, please.
Randy Alexander.
Here.
My favor.
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Kenny Carson?
Here.
Lindsay Christman?
Here.
Ray Devenus?
Here.
Andy Rapp?
Here.
Charles Cofield?
Here.
Connie Sheeney?
Here. Public comment. First of all, I'd like to call Bob Tanner up. If you'd come over here, Bob.
He's first going to talk.
Oh, you want to talk first?
Yes.
Okay. I have some things to say too. So go ahead, Bob. Bob is the executive director of the FQHC in Elgin and McHenry. Go ahead.
So, good evening. I'm Bob Tanner, president of Greater Family Health. I used to be president and CEO. Oh, but that ended on June 30th. And I was invited to make a few comments tonight as I come to my career as I've given retirement and a new lady. Actually, she's not new to us, Lupe Fonseca, who's been with us for 20 years. Our chief operating officer has been promoted to CEO. I know I only have three minutes. I have a few things to say. It's unbelievable the impact that this mental health board has had on the clients and residents of this county. I've been involved with your county for 20 years. It was way back when, when Sandy Lewis came up from central Illinois and knew of the concept of a federally qualified health center. There was no federally qualified health centers in McHenry County and invited what was known as Greater Elgin Family Care Center back in 2007 to come up north because there were so many people from McHenry County coming down to the Elgin area for primary health care, including psychiatry and mental health care. We were invited, Greater Elgin Family Care Center was invited to open up a community health center part-time in Family Services' new building, which was way exciting, right? Because it was the integration of medical care, pharmacy, laboratory, and behavioral health care in one site. And we were fortunate enough to receive some money from the federal government that allowed us to then construct the building at 3901 Mercy Drive, which you all know as Greater Family Health Center in McHenry, which is now providing care to over 11,000 people a year, over 32,000 appointments each year. And you all are supporting for quite some time now for psychiatry, behavioral health integration, outpatient therapy, and most recently medication-assisted treatment. Besides being quite impactful on the residents of this county, there was also a difficulty way back when, when family service shut down and there was hardly any psychiatry in the county, and Greater Elgin Family Care Center was asked to take on psychiatry and bring it to our building at 3901 Mercy Drive, which we had not designed for behavioral health care because Family Services was here. So we took on Dr. Elizabeth McMasters and her entire Swedish staff at the Mental Health Board's request and were able to begin providing psychiatry to county residents. And then the Mental Health Board had some difficulties in realizing at the time that that costs a lot of money to do that, especially when you're taking care of about 35% of the patient population that's uninsured. We actually had to vote, our board did, to shut the services down. Dr. McMasters went to Northwestern Medicine, actually St. Tegar at the time, and it was about a year or so later that we finally got back together again and began providing psychiatry again. And I'm really happy that we were able to overcome that because, like you, all the executives out here have businesses to run and then the end is the bottom line. So I'll end with the fact that it's been a pleasure working with this county for 20 years. And you all, like you, many of you, I remember when this building was built, I remember what was being planned. You've got a great leader. I'm really happy that Lupe Fonseca is going to be, or is, our new CEO. She'll actually take over president and CEO on October 19th because my last day is the 18th. I just really wanted to say thank you and tell you that Greater Family Health will be absolutely fine. And I hope that the county's residents continue to be most fortunate as being beneficiaries of what you guys provide to them.
Well, I have a few things to say, of course, Bob. And what you said is true. It was sort of a rough start and then it came around again for psychiatry in this county. You've done a wonderful job serving people. And when you came to the county, it was, like you said, it was tough at first and you stopped psychiatry for a while, but you brought it back. And he sees so many people in the Elgin location. And I know I've had tours there and if you haven't gone there, it's phenomenal. You can send anyone there whether they have money or not. And we want to recognize you because you've been around as long as I've been around. And this plaque is from the Mental Health Board. And there is a book here. And it says, "Bob Tanner, President and CEO, Greater Family Health, courage and drive to expand services in McHenry County. Thank you for your leadership and we really will miss you in retirement." Hopefully you still come around. (applause)
So federally qualified health centers, just for you're all aware, are the nation's largest provider of primary health care in the United States, now serving one out of every 10 U.S. residents, including citizens and non-citizens. Thirty-two and a half million people, founded during the war on poverty in 1965. There's about 1,400 FQHCs in the country. There's 45 of them in the state of Illinois. Greater Family Health is fifth largest in the state. Last fiscal year, we took care of 72,500 people for almost a quarter million appointments. It's a big operation. So in Illinois, literally one out of every eight people receives their care at federally qualified health center. Most federally qualified health centers are accredited, some of them like us in multiple different silos. All of us are audited by the federal government, the state government, who calls financial auditors as well. So we tend to do well on audits that you guys have. Most, I'm sure you are all advocates for low-income people, people that need mental health care, primary health care. The need is overwhelming. We literally cannot expand fast enough. And it's only going to get worse due to the baby boomer population work for sure, just things like that. So I urge you again to carry on, right?
And here's to Bob.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. All right. Okay, under public comment, we have Abby.
Tough act to follow. But hi, my name is Abby Nicholas. I'm the executive director of NAMI McHenry County. Just wanted to start by thanking you as always for all of your support that you give us. This fiscal year, we are on track to serve more clients than we ever have in our history. We've started several new support groups and we've started several new programs geared towards youth, including a new youth mental health presentation called Ending the Silence. And we're starting NAMI on-campus clubs at high schools and at MCC. So lots of exciting stuff happening at NAMI. But I also wanted to take the opportunity to invite you to two really wonderful upcoming events. So actually, two walks, two Saturdays in a row. So come to both, come to one. Both are going to be great, though. The first is the annual Never Walk Alone through the McHenry County Suicide Prevention Task Force. So this is going to be on Saturday, September 28th, at the Dole in Crystal Lake. Both of these walks, registration is free. You can come day of, bring your family, bring your friends, bring your community. So this walk is going to be really remembering those we've lost by suicide and helping to raise funds to prevent deaths by suicide in the future. And then on the very next Saturday, September 5th, NAMI is bringing back our walk as well.
October.
October 5th. Thank you so much, Connie. October 5th at Veterans Acres at 9:00 a.m., we are having a walk as well. This walk is going to have a really large resource fair with mental health agencies in the county. The Mental Health Board is having a booth. It's going to be fun, family festival, vendors, just a really like celebration of coming together for advocacy and awareness of mental health in our county. So I'll leave both of these over there and hope that you all can come to both events. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Abby. Okay, that's the end of a public comment. I need a motion to approve the minutes. Anybody want to make a motion?
Can I make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second?
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed to it? Okay. Then we can move on to the presentation, which our attorney and, I don't know, another attorney from our firm is here to talk about statutory versus operational and chain of command. And I've asked them to do this. So I'll let you take it away. And if you turn on your little button that it's green, is it green?
It must be coming around.
There it is.
There it is. You want to put it towards your mouth?
Okay, so we are the attorneys with Zukowski, Rogers, Flood, and McCardle. I think we have met everybody. I'm Brandy Quantz and this is David McCardle. So we're going to go through several topics that we had discussed with Connie and Leo, mainly that came out of the board self-assessment survey. We're going to go through how the board is made up under the Community Mental Health Act and how the board relates under the Community Mental Health Act to the McHenry County Board. And then how this board is set up through its organizational chart, its policies and its bylaws. And these things are the things that show what the president's role is, what the board's role is, what the executive director's role is, and then touch on some good governance-type things, too. So first is the statutory makeup. This is where the Mental Health Board comes from. It is the Community Mental Health Act. It is 405 ILCS 20, if you ever want to fall asleep. So this is how the Mental Health Board is formed. It has the statutory duties and powers. And these sections are kind of the makeup sections, we'll say. This is, Section 3A establishes how it establishes the Mental Health Board. It sets forth how the Mental Health Board is appointed. 3B is the terms of office. The Mental Health Fund is in D. The board's powers and duties are in Section 3E. 3F talks about the budget. And then 5 and 6 are levying taxes. And 10, 11, and 12 are all about bonds. That's not everything, but those are sort of the highlights. The Act outlines how the Mental Health Board and the county board interact. And statutorily, they actually interact very little. They're separate autonomous boards. And the Mental Health Board is really more specialized than the county board. The county board is much more general. It covers many more things. The Mental Health Board is strictly mental health. It is bring money in, give money out to funded agencies. The way the Mental Health Board is appointed, it's appointed by the county board under the Act, by the chair of the governing body with the advice and consent of the governing body. So it's by the chair with the advice and consent of the county board. And only one member of the Mental Health Board can be a member of the county board also. So on the other side of the equation, the Mental Health Board, they can, and this is new in the statute as of this year, the Mental Health Board can establish a policy and procedure for accepting and reviewing applications for the Mental Health Board. So that's found in Section 3B of the Act. So this board, and I know Winnebago County has already done it, has set forth a policy of how people apply. And then the mental health board can make a recommendation to the county board.
Is everybody clear on that? We don't have that. We should be...
I'm sorry. Sorry.
Did you hit your button?
Do you know why that was put in there? I was reading that today. I didn't know.
I don't know exactly why. I think that it was because there are a lot of boards that are smaller and having significant issues with the funded agencies. They just don't get along. So I think that this was sort of one of the ways that they thought to try to make that better.
And this, I'm assuming it would be then like a recommendation to like PHCS then when they would go through the process because they would still let the county follow the process?
Say that again?
Like at the county, their like public health and community service committee would still, it would be a recommendation, if we did do it, if we implemented it, it would go to PHCS then, I would assume?
We are going to be developing our own policy because this is new.
Right, that's what I, yeah.
Yeah, we have not developed that.
It's up to us to make it up on what that policy is.
And then I guess it would be up to the county board also as to how they would direct the recommendation, if they would do it to public health.
Right.
Or not. But this is new and we'll see how it goes. The other way that the county board and the Mental Health Board are kind of related is through finances. The McHenry County Board is the one that sets and collects the taxes. So the old way of doing that was through property taxes. And now we know our new way of doing that is through sales tax. And this is actually the special county retailer's occupation tax for mental health. So that was the referendum that was passed. The Mental Health Board, with regards to finances, has to submit the 12-month plan to the county board and it has to submit an annual budget and an annual report. And this is a new provision also. These reports, these two, the budget and the report, are for informational purposes only. And really, part of that is because you have to let the county board know, especially with levying taxes, how much money they would need to levy. So this is a change in the statute now as well, that you're just letting them know for informational purposes.
Does everybody understand, especially the new people, that the county board is a government and we're a government? And the only way we're related is so far, just two topics. The appointment process and then the taxes they generate for us. Okay.
Let's get another question on that then. So if you could just go back on that one, that with the new, because, so are you saying that it's just informational purposes? So you're actually saying, it seems to be a little conflicting, though. You're saying that they don't need to approve the budget any longer? Okay.
It's sales tax and what we get is what we get. I mean, you know...
I know, but...
What's good about this language, though, is that it's clear. I'm not so sure last time it was clear because we've been talking about the various roles between the county and us monetarily and finance for as long as I've been here. And I think this is clear. So that's good.
So I guess in dealing with the county board, I'm the liaison, and was under the impression that they'd gotten a different opinion, that it was still having to get the approval of the, just the budget, not any control within the budget, but the overall budget, kind of like the conservation district works right now?
And I think that's the way that it was done in the past.
Well, and I thought that they had evaluated it since this. So I mean, that's going to be, I'll follow up with that because the information that I had gotten conflicts with that.
That's another word maybe we should explore since we're going through the foundation, the liaison position. It's very unusual. Why don't you go through that in some, if you have to back up, the county board's appointment, maybe a county board member, doesn't have to be. And then the word liaisons that we talked about.
So...
Just so everybody understands the verbiage.
So with the, in the section on appointments in the Community Mental Health Act, there's actually nothing about a county board liaison in there. The only thing in there about the county board members, only one McHenry County, one county board member can be a member of the Mental Health Board. So the liaison portion of that is something that the county has done. It isn't a statutory requirement. It isn't something that the Mental Health Board has done. That's something that the McHenry County Board has done. They have chosen to say, hey, we're going to appoint someone and we're going to appoint one of those people as a liaison. So the requirements of the liaison for the county board, it's kind of an additional contingency that the county board is requesting of the liaison.
But from our perspective, that county board representative or that seat is a member of our board. And we stop at that point. It's just, that's another member of the board, period. And they act like every other member of the board. There's nothing to do with the county. It's just you're a member of our board. That's kind of the way to view it.
So the other way is through governmental cooperation. And this is, statutorily, all governments can cooperate with each other. They can kind of give away their powers, whatever powers they have, they can put it on to another government entity. And that's kind of the way that you, a lot of times, make efficient governments. In this situation, we have one intergovernmental agreement with the county, and that's an IGA for IT. Two, do we have one for?
Facilities management.
Facilities management, two. One for IT and one for facilities management. So those are kind of the only way from a statutory legal perspective that the county board and the Mental Health Board interact. There are a myriad of other ways that the Mental Health Board and the county board cooperate. For instance, the county board writes all the checks for the Mental Health Board. They post the agendas on the county's website and the meeting minutes, those types of things. Even the county board liaison is kind of a, it shows how the two boards cooperate. But when it comes to the, what the Mental Health Board does, how to allocate funds, its budget, its staff, its vision, its direction, its policy, those are separate entities.
Wait, I want to say that in a different way. So what we're here trying to point out is the statutory lanes you're in. You can go outside those lanes, not a problem, but just, we just want to make sure everyone knows what the statute and your regulations, your only regulations provide so you can have that demarcation between what the statutes provide and what we're doing otherwise.
So next, we're going to go to the Mental Health Board makeup. And the Mental Health Board obviously is made up of your officers, your board members, your executive director, and your staff. The two officers that are required by statute are the president and the secretary. So the other two aren't required by statute, but you've set that up through your bylaws. This next chart is the organizational chart for the Mental Health Board. And as you can see, the Mental Health Board is the top box. Well, maybe not as you can see. It's kind of hard to see. That top box is the Mental Health Board. And the box directly underneath that is the executive director. And then all of the staff fall underneath that. So in addition to your organizational chart, you also have policies. And this is your policy on board authority and chain of command. So this outline, what I've highlighted here, outlines the board's role. So the board's role is really to promulgate policy, delegate responsibility, hire the executive director, and direct and evaluate the executive director. So that is from the board authority and chain of command policy. If we go to the bylaws, that sets forth the president's role. The president is the, and this is in Article 5, Section 4 of your bylaws, the president is the executive, the principal executive director, in charge of the affairs of the Mental Health Board and make sure that the resolutions and directives are carried into effect. They discharge all the duties incident to the office of president, preside at all meetings, which is a big one, execute contracts, and appoint members to the various committees, appoint the chair, and then appoint residents to any ad hoc committees. So the big one there is really preside at meetings and then make sure that all of the resolutions and directives of this board, of the Mental Health Board, are carried into The vice president, the big one here, is to perform the duties of the president when the president can't act. It's good to have in place, you know, in advance, in case the president could not make a meeting, then we already have the vice president in place. The secretary is in charge of the minutes, notices. The secretary is the custodian of records, an interesting one. They have to keep a register of the post office addresses of all the members and other duties that may be assigned. So while the secretary is required under the statute, I think a lot of the secretary's duties are actually performed by staff. And then the treasurer is the principal accounting officer. Uh-oh.
You really pushed the button a lot.
The treasurer, again, from the bylaws, this is Article 5, Section 7, is the principal accounting and financial officer. They maintain the books and are in charge and custody of all the funds and securities. They're in charge of all the receipts and disbursements. Again, this is one of those that really, a lot of this falls under staff and the treasurer is just the oversight for that. I'm going to press it once. And then this actually is the executive director's role, but this is the same slide that you saw for the board's role. So this is the exact same language, it's just the different highlights. So the executive director's role is the day-to-day operations of the Mental Health Board. To draft the rules and procedures, the executive director has to make sure that the board complies with the Community Mental Health Act, delegates to staff for the operations of the board, manages staff, and is the designated agent of the Mental Health Board.
So can you go back to the flow chart? So, I can't even read that. So the way it works here, what's that top box say?
Mental Health. Board of Directors.
Yeah, so the top box is Mental Health Board of Directors. And underneath that is executive director. And so this board, the executive director, think of yourselves as the legislative body of a city. You are the board with the power and authority that's granted by the statute, in this case to take your funds and do what you need to do with them. And then the day-to-day, everything below that has been delegated to the boss, and the boss is the executive director, day-to-day operations of everything. It's not the board. Is everybody clear on that? The board, I'll have more to say about this in the future, but just keep this chart in mind as she's going through this because that's important to know what the scope of the duties are of the director. the duties are of the director.
So this is the executive director's position summary. So this is from the job description. And this is what you, the board, has hired someone to do. So you want, you've hired a chief executive officer to implement and administer the policies that you have put in place. Again, the executive director manages the day-to-day operations, carries out the responsibilities in the Community Mental Health Act, and is accountable for the overall mission. The executive director develops the vision of the mental health board and is the mental health board's liaison to both the county board and to funded agencies. And the executive director is also in charge of recruitment and retention of staff.
And the policies that your executive director is implementing and making sure they get done on a day-to-day, day-to-day scenario are overseen by the board president. If you remember, the board president's responsible for implementing the plans of this board. So it goes, the board creates the policies and direction implemented by the board president, day-to-day executive director, or, yeah, executive director.
There's a couple other policies for the executive director's role. There's the chain of command policy, and that one just is more specific to complaints. If the board gets complaints, those are first supposed to be directed to the executive director. And then it's, it's different for the staff. The staff gets to first resolve and then talk to their supervisor if they can't resolve it. And also, the policy on media contact, for any, any media requests, those are supposed to be directed to the executive director also. So this slide just kind of shows all of the previous slides condensed into this and the next slide. So board members, what do you do? You are really here to create the policy and direction of the mental health board. And you do that through your motions, through debates, and through voting. And that policy and direction is pushed down to the president, who's the principal executive officer. The president makes sure that that policy and direction goes into effect, and then that is pushed down to the executive director, who's the chief executive officer. And the, the executive director's going to implement that policy and direction. It's also going to, the executive director position is gonna develop the vision, day-to-day operations, delegate to staff, and is the designated agent for the mental health board and liaison to the county board and funded agencies. So... I'm not doing that, I just want everyone to know. So one of the things that we wanted to talk about too is, some people say that like the board can't limit your ability to talk to people, and that, that's entirely correct. But what we wanted to point out is that outside, like your superpowers are the fact that you're the mental health board. So the only time that you have those superpowers are really when you are a board and you're acting together. When you're outside of this room and not acting as the mental health board, you don't have mental health board authority, or you're not acting on behalf of the mental health board unless you've been, unless you've been given the power to do that. So right now, that, the board has given that specific authority, especially when dealing with funded agencies or with the governing body, the county board, that's been designated to the executive director. So those are like the rules that we're operating under. So now, some of this is just more a theoretical, some good governance, we'll say. So again, the board's the policymakers, so you guys are the purpose. And the executive director and the staff are more the operational, the administrative portion of that, so they're the means. You're the purpose, they're the means to get it done. We always like to have boards speak with one voice, that's always nice. It's always nice to have clear lines of, of authority about who should carry out a job and what the board's expectations are. And then, we also like to see, if you are going to dissent on a vote, dissent prior to the vote, you vote and then you carry on. You don't want to undermine the board's power and authority by being a thorn in the side of anyone once you've already voted. So again, it's kind of that, your, your, your superpower is being the mental health board. The board is the one with the power, not the individual.
So one example of that that I give to cities and villages that we give these same talks to, this is not unusual, by the way, that we're going through these procedures. When, when Brandy suggests that you, your power ends when you walk out of this meeting, that's true, in a legal sense, but also from an apparent authority standpoint, especially with employees. And the best example I can give is, we had a city council once where after each, a lot of meetings, not each one, but many meetings, one of the particular people on the city council would go into the city hall the next morning and start walking around city hall dictating, you know, suggesting what, how the employees should be doing their business in order to do what he or she thought was the right thing to do. Well, it got to a point where the mayor had to put up two doors, just like in this room, with a counter in the between and lock the doors. Because the, the aldermen just don't belong back in the employee section, and it's not that it's illegal, it's intimidating. Because when, when a, a person of authority off a board walks into an employee setting and starts talking about anything, it suggests authority, and I need to listen, I'm an employee, you're my boss, I'm gonna do what you tell me and I'm gonna pay attention and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do my work. I have to listen and pay attention. And that's very intimidating and, you know, it can verge on harassment if you get into the wrong situations. So you have to be careful, especially in the employee setting, how you represent yourself as an individual board member versus the whole board giving direction to the executive director, how you want something done, and then the executive director goes into that person or that group of people and says, here's the board's policy, do it. Those are two different scenarios, so just be aware of that.
And it's a matter too of, does the employee have one boss versus 10? And if you have one boss, you easily take direction. If you have 10, you're pulled in 10 different directions, because those may not be consistent. And if the, if you're doing it without the executive director knowing or their immediate supervisor knowing, they already have a full workload, and so now you're adding on to that full workload, and then somebody's gonna start wondering why they're not getting their work done. And that might reflect poorly on them.
And that, that doesn't have anything to do with asking for documents, asking for information, that's not the level we're talking about. We're talking about a higher level of interfering. That's what was going on in the city I talked about. There was actually, not, not intentional, I'm gonna interfere with your job, it's just annoying interference. It was getting in the way of day-to-day business and it was routine, had to stop.
So next is just be prepared for the meetings. Do your homework, read your packet, it's going to make for a much more efficient meeting. Use effective staff reports. If you, if you study in advance, it's not gonna be first heard at the meeting, you're going to have less questions, because it's probably in a good staff report. If you don't know something, use your experts, use your staff. And we usually recommend, if you are going to have questions for staff, ask them in advance. You know, you can call up Leo and say, okay, here's my questions for the board packet, and she can relay those to the appropriate person, and then they'll be prepared. And some of those you, might be able to be asked in advance, I mean, might be able to be answered in advance. If it's not, if it's, or if it is answered and you still think it's important, you can certainly bring it up at the meeting so that everybody can know what you're talking about and the question gets discussed. But if you ask those questions in advance, it allows staff time to prepare. For meetings, this is just, short meetings are great if that means that the legwork is done in advance, if it, if it is because it's orderly, everyone can stay focused and interested. After too long, everybody's attention just starts to wane. The good thing is these start at six and not at seven, so you're not going until 10 o'clock at night, hopefully. And then also, just remember, stay on task, don't, you are the policy promulgators, so just be care of getting, be careful of getting into the minutia. You're the, you're the big picture, you're the vision people, so refer issues to staff to follow up on and rely on your staff. And then also, working with your staff, work through the president, work through the executive director. You certainly can expect, like David said before, you can expect communication, you can expect information and responsiveness, but really try to let them do their job. And again, ask questions in advance. We talked about the workloads and having one boss versus 10, so that will help if you go through the chain of command for that. And then this next slide, we all know it, but it's always a good reminder. Be civil to each other. You can have differing opinions, most people will have some sort of differing opinion. You can be responsible and disagree, and you can disagree without being disagreeable as well. If there is something where everybody has a differing opinion, you can consider doing a planning session on that or a workshop. And then again, once the board votes, regardless of the decision of your vote or your personal position, that was the board's vote, so you want to support the board once the vote has happened. And then this is a short slide, but important one, and it's just, this is the role of the staff. They're the ones that are going to be doing the day-to-day operations. They have specific job descriptions, if you want to look at their details. And this is really where the board's policy and direction, it takes life. It's where the work actually gets done, so we appreciate the staff. And then they're, they're reporting to either their immediate supervisors or the executive director. So that's really all that we have. Do you guys have any questions or any questions, comments, cuss words?
We'll leave a stack of copies of the PowerPoint, so you have the citation at least, or maybe the county issue.
It'd be nice to have a copy of that.
Yeah. Actually, we should have distributed it ahead of time.
I meant to hand them out before, but I forgot.
Okay, I'm just saying, I think it'd be nice to have a copy of it, so. Does anybody have any questions before we go on? Thank you for presenting and doing all that work.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. On my report, I have several things I want to talk about. One of the things that they talked about, you know, all the applications are in for funding now, and you should go to VICKY and get your password or however you get into FONDENT and see what the staff wrote on each application and what you can write or any questions that you have on those applications that, instead of sitting here at night when we're presenting saying, how about this, how about, it's all in FONDENT and you get to see every staff member's comments in the applications. So take time to do it. Every year, I'll be honest, I have to go to VICKY and say, what's, what's my password? I don't remember, I only go in there once a year, so, but you should do that ahead of time, before it's presented. And there's quite a few to go through, but go through them, read them, it will answer a lot of your questions, and you can put your comments in there, you know, on each of the applications. So I encourage you to do that. And if you don't know how to get into it, which?
After Labor Day.
Oh, after Labor Day, okay. After Labor Day, sorry, that's next week.
I'll, I'll explain it in my director's report.
It's, it's where all the applications are.
I'll explain it in my director's report.
Oh, she'll explain it in her director's report. Anyway, I'm just encouraging you to do that. On May 5th and 7th next year is the NatCom Convention in Philadelphia. If anyone is interested in going to that, please let me know. It really is a good convention, we've gone several times this year, we did not go, but if you're interested, let me know. Also, there's a Community Connection Summit on September 13th at MCC, even if you can come for a little bit of it. You've got a flyer, this flyer in your packet, come. I mean, I can't stay the whole day, but, you know, come to it, it's worthwhile seeing. And it's gonna be on loneliness, and there's all sorts of different breakout sessions that you can go to. Make sure that I got, and all the educational stuff is in your packet. Like Abby said, the walk, that's the two walks that are coming up. And my last thing on, I need to let you know, your president won't be here next month. Not missed many meetings, but I will be in Portugal as you are meeting, so, and it's a fun thing, so I can't call in. So I'll turn it over now to Leo.
Thanks, Connie. I just have a few things for the director's report. As Connie had mentioned, the fiscal year funding application review process has begun. We've had over 101 applications submitted, again, with some of those duplicates under the opioid funding. Out of those, we had 22 new programs that are requesting funding, and seven of these programs are for five new agencies. There's approximately $10.8 million budgeted for client services, along with $650 million for opioid settlement dollars. So it will be another difficult decision for this year as we continue to have a greater demand than we, we can fund, as noted by the $5.3 million in requests above what we have in our budget. So at this point, what we're doing right now, the staff, our reviews are complete. However, we are trying to balance the budget. We have, you know, we met on, yesterday, we had $1.3 million to cut so that we could be complete by tomorrow. So we are meeting tomorrow. Thereafter, VICKY's gonna work her magic in FONDENT, and we anticipate that it's gonna be opened after Labor Day, so September 3rd. You will get all the information sent to you from VICKY about the tutorial and how to get into FONDENT. If you need to set up any time with her, she's more than willing to do that, but the tutorials are usually pretty good. We will send the Excel spreadsheet with the information on there for you to keep track of, for your own tracking purposes. The hard copy manuals should be available for pickup on September 6th. So again, we'll let you know, this is our target date then, is for you to get into FONDENT, to do the reviews on, after Labor Day on September 3rd, and we, and you'll have the Excel spreadsheet as your tracking mechanism for you to start at that point, and we hope to have your manual then for pickup on September 6th. So again, you will receive more information.
You'll see what the staff writes down too. It really is good to, and if you have questions prior than coming to the meeting, call, ask me, ask Leo, but to me, it's interesting to see how the staff reviewed it and how their thoughts are. I'm sorry.
It's okay. As far as IT projects, I just wanted to state that we have completed the door project, so all the door projects have been completed. We are aligned on the new system. All the new badges have been issued to the majority of the tenants, along with the agreements for the badge and key replacements. And I just want to point out, you know, one, a big thanks to Eric, you know, for his detailed attention to all the door project issues that came up and, and taking care of all those. But I also want to point out, Bridget, who not only is our executive assistant, but as you know, she's also our building manager, has taken on such a great role. She organized, if, she organized that, the tenant badge replacement so well, and it went so smoothly, and I just can't thank Lori and Eric and Bridget enough for all the work that they did through that process, but Bridget did a phenomenal job through that as well. Also, I want to point out that we are live streaming right now. So the live streaming project is here, and we are being... So the live streaming project is here, and we are being livestreamed, so anyone who needs to get on that stream is through the county. So you'll go on the county's website, and you'll be able to click on that livestream, and you can also go back and review any of the Board meetings that you wish. So we have Greg here also from County IT. Very happy to have him here, so thank you for being here and overseeing this process for this evening as well.
Bridget's going to send something out that we can watch it on YouTube, too, which is better. So instead of looking at the county, what you can, but if you really want to see it better, it's on YouTube, and she's going to, I want her to send it to me, so she'll send it out to all of you.
And I just had a couple other things regarding county, state, and federal interface. We have had our Mental Health Board quarterly two reports. We're part of the county board meeting packets for the first time in history, so we're happy about that, that our information is now part of the county board packets and will be there quarterly. Carolyn, our liaison, will continue to do reports to the county board, and I will also be attending public health quarterly versus just one time a year. And then Connie and I, or the President and the ED, will always present annually to the county board in May. So those are the interfaces that we've done with the county, and we're really happy with that in order to provide more information. The other piece I wanted to mention is that DMH is working on the HFS, with HFS, on the implementation of the CCBHCs, and I want to acknowledge Thresholds, who's part of the State Demonstration Project, as one of the CCBHCs that were selected, and that is starting on October 1st. So we're excited about that, and having a CCBHC in this community is huge. That's really it. I believe Connie and Abby both talked about, you know, the Community Connection Summit and some of the walks that are coming up, so really encourage the Board involvement in all those. And also in planning ahead, I just did want to mention the October 9th and 16th special meeting dates. Those will be where we're going to be having the new funding programs and agencies present. We're hoping that all others, if there's questions that you have when you're going through your reviews, if you can send those questions to me, is what we're hoping to do is answer questions ahead of time from the regular agencies so that the October 9th and 16th can be more about the new funding programs. Otherwise, you can recommend anyone else to come to those meetings, but they get kind of large. So we're hoping to get all our questions answered prior to then.
Hoping we only need one meeting.
So that's all I have for my report.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Greg, do you have a report from the Ethics and Compliance?
Nothing really that's not in the statistics that are in the packet.
Okay.
For this meeting, I think.
Thank you. Then we'll turn on, we'll go over to Lindsay Finance.
We did not have a finance meeting in August. Just a couple minor adjustments to the budget that was in the packet later, and just a reminder that that's pretty normal because we don't get the exact information relating to personnel, budget line items and things like that, their benefits packages, so we see a couple of minor adjustments coming through. If you have any specific questions about that, I know we can discuss that at that time, and that's it from me.
Any questions for Lindsay? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Connie.
Pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry, you vote on here. I keep forgetting.
First off, I think there was something, there was an approval. Where is that sheet of paper? There's an approval for the funding agreements, D, E, and F. If part of your consent agenda motion is approving it with a change in the pronoun that was found under resident eligibility in all three of them, the change is changing it to his. It was in your packet.
You're not recording.
It was for you to read, Connie.
It was for me.
You have it right there to read.
Sorry, guys. Put it on the side. Before approving the consent agenda, we need to approve the funding agreement, D and F, with the following changes in all three agreements. Under resident eligibility, changing the pronoun to his to their. And what I usually get is a motion to approve it, and then we discuss, and then we vote. So we will be voting on here, but is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
First, you need a motion.
Pardon me?
I'll make a motion to approve that consent agenda.
Are you pulling those items off consent?
What'd she say?
The changes are being pulled off consent, and those are being ... Pulled D through F off consent. Correct.
Oh, pulled D through F off of the consent.
D through F. Okay, so we're going to pull off D, E, and F, and so your consent agenda would be A, B, C, and G.
And why are we pulling that off?
Because you're making changes to them.
Oh, okay, okay. That's right. Okay, so the consent agenda, A, B, C.
And G.
And D. Hear me?
G.
Or G, I'm sorry, G. Making a motion for that?
Yes.
Second?
I'll second.
Greg's second.
Not Greg.
Okay, okay. Anyway, now on our thing, we can vote for that. It should come up. Okay, it passed.
It didn't come up for me.
Yeah, we agreed. Agreed.
Okay, it took now, Mike, because there's nine. Okay. So now discussion on the funding agreements.
First, you have to have a motion. I'll make a motion for ...
The funding agreement?
D, E, and F, with the changes made in there.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Chris is second, okay. Discussion, Adam, and I will, I can't go back. It won't let me come and ...
There's no Adam.
There we go. Reference to funding agreement. What page is the change on?
There are different pages. There ...
It's on the end of the ...
It's under resident eligibility in each of the three funding agreements.
And that's the only change that occurred from last year's?
It's been on there forever. It's the only, it's the only error that was found recently.
Page 71, there's an example of it. There, number four.
71.
Certain word is America.
Yeah.
I'm getting there.
How do we get it off of here?
Page 42.
Okay. Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then we'll take a vote. Should come up on your screen. Eric, can you, is it on your screens? No. Eric, can you put it on the screen? Okay, there it goes. Okay, that passed. So it's Community Mental Health Act.
You're on old business now.
I know. Old business, FY25 budget adjustments. Leo, want to talk about that?
I think Lindsay talked about it in the Treasurers Report, that it's just basic changes that were made to the budget to align with the county board's budget, so you would just need a motion to approve.
I need a motion. If you read the recommendation, the McHenry County Mental Health Board of Directors hereby approve FY25 budget adjustment as presented in the decision memo, and directs the Executive Director to update the FY25 budget entry in the D 365 system.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Ray's second it. Okay, we can vote. It should come up.
We have discussion, please? We have discussion?
Yeah, you got to touch it. Whoops, I don't know what happened.
Discussion.
Mine won't do it. No? All right. Did yours come up to vote?
Discussion.
Discussion.
Oh, discussion, I'm sorry. Go ahead. This thing does not, okay.
Thank you. I just want to confirm that the net change in FY25 budget is zero. If my math is correct, everything's zeroed out from the change from one section to the other.
I'm sorry, your question?
Is the net change in the FY25 budget zero? We're just moving money from one section to another, correct?
Lindsay could answer that.
I believe there's an addition. Yes, it's moving some monies in different areas because then there's an addition to client services as a result. Yes. So it is moving dollars to different areas to align with the county board's budget.
But it's not changing our bottom line?
No.
That's, okay, I did my math. I just want to make sure that we're not changing any bottom line dollar amount. Okay, thank you.
No, and the official budget is after this in your packet.
Thank you.
Okay. So now, if you touch the screen, you should be able to vote. So now we go to new business. The Ascension, and you've got a letter there from Cece. The Ascension's application submission request, and she is here to answer any questions that you should have. I got to pull it up here.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for letting me come tonight, and I appreciate it to everybody on the Board and Leo, that staff, for us.
I hate this damn thing.
For us to continue to provide great services for the children, youth, and families in our county. I just want to start, I did send a email to all the Board members expressing my horror, actually, I didn't put that in the email, about the fact that technology did not suit me.
I'm going to have to have you, hold a second. I forgot to ask for a motion before you talk.
Okay.
I'm sorry. So can I have a motion to, I guess, approve this, the recommendation?
Before you go into discussion?
A motion for the discussion, for the recommendation?
Extension of public comment, too.
I can't hear you.
Could be an extension of public comment.
Okay. All right. I want an extension of public comment. Let her present. Okay. Okay.
Thank you. So as I was saying, I originally had thought that I had submitted the first grant. I did not. Thought there was one box, didn't do it right, came back from vacation and realized I had messed up. So I didn't think I was going to get a motion. But this role is very important to me. It's the first year that we've had the clinical navigator role. Melissa's done a great job. I would prefer to send you everything she's done out rather than read the extensive list of everything that she's created, and I would really like to have her continue to create. Lot of peer support groups, work with NAMI. She just started a group with NAMI today. She's very active in Hope Squads. She has started with some others in the room, NAMI and Thresholds and Independence and Pioneer, expedited appointments, which we just started to roll out on a pilot program during the school year with some school districts, because I think everybody knows that one of the biggest areas of deficit in our community is fast appointments for psychiatric services as well as for psychological services. So Melissa, who's our clinical navigator, has done a great job pulling together a group of incredible other providers to come up with a format where Monday through Friday, all of the different providers are going to provide two hours that we save to just provide next day appointments, two day appointments, whatever we need to do to get these kids in, their families in, as fast as we possibly can, and then triage them because we all work together very well, Network Council, thanks to Leo for that leadership, and just to really provide that. She's also recently started to work on a substance abuse group for the youth in our community because so many of our kids are exposed to substance abuse of parents. She talked to Network Council about that on Monday, and one of the things that we see as a need, aside from just Alateen, because Alateen has a very structured format, is for teens to have a different support type of vehicle where they could do groups so that they can talk about shared struggles that they have being raised in a situation where our parents or guardians or whoever, family members, are substance abusers.
Cece, I have to sort of cut you off because it's just the presentation of why and what you're asking for here.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just get passionate once I start talking.
I know, I know you are with Dr. Katz. So we have a motion to approve it, and second, but ...
Wait, wait. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
Okay, second, second, okay. Now discussion. Is there any discussion?
More questions? There may be more questions.
Okay, if there's more questions for you.
Gotcha.
To approve, because this would be, I just need to say, this would set a precedent because anyone who's requested later than the date, we usually do not approve, and we did not approve a couple last year. That's all I'm going to throw out. It's up to the Board. Carolyn, go ahead.
And I will comment, because I actually, last year, I know that there was like the hard, I wasn't part of that, but I would rather see programs continue or have the chance of continuing. I mean, this is just to have them apply. It's not guaranteeing any kind of funding or anything. It is just to be put in the pool with everybody else, and I understand, you know, there is a deadline, but at the same time, I do also understand there are special circumstances that do arrive, and it kind of broke my heart last year on a couple of the programs that were like, well, they didn't do that correctly, or they didn't fill that out correctly, and it was something that is so needed. So I mean, I just think it deserves to be put into the consideration with the rest of them.
Okay, I just wanted you to know that precedent-wise, that's all I'm trying to say. Any other discussion? Go ahead, Christina.
Yeah, I also agree. Anybody can make a mistake anytime. I just think it might be beneficial for us to clarify, you know, under what circumstances we're going to say, oh, this is a minor procedural error, you know, because I want us to be consistent in our approach, and I also like didn't, I wanted to let the people who submitted late last year go ahead, and I don't remember like what the difference was last year in terms of like what their unique circumstances were that are different from this.
Go ahead, Leo. I'll have Leo explain to what it was.
This one and the next one also.
Well, I can explain.
She's going to explain, but I can't bring you up here. Your name isn't even there. Okay.
So last year, the provider that we didn't allow in is because they didn't have a dr-. So, last year, the provider that we didn't allow in is because they didn't have a draft form at all. So we can see in our foundant system, the people who have drafts, and how far they are in their drafts and so forth, that provider last year did not have any draft at all, and came to the board asking for a late submission. In this case, there is definitely a draft, it's pretty well completed, because the one box wasn't checked, there were a few other questions, but as Cece has relayed, those questions are the same answers they were last year, as she was stating. So it's really up to the board, there is a difference between last year and this year's. And two years ago, we also did allow an applicant who didn't click submit to upload something and click submit. So we did allow that two years ago. So I think we're pretty consistent.
I think the exception would be repeat offenses, you know, disregard.
Mike, you need to click that button.
And there wasn't a disregard, yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? Then I ask you to vote on it. Thank you, Cece. Thank you all. It has to come up. See this? Did yours come up?
There's a question there.
I just want to state that if you don't have your microphone on, the encoder will not pick up your voice, so it will be just blank voice. So make sure you're hitting your button.
Pretty enough.
Everybody needs to vote. Okay. We had one abstain, one no, and the rest yes, so yes, you can do it.
Thank you so much.
All right. The next thing on the agenda is consumer credit counseling, and there is a letter in your packet and a decision memo. So I'd like a motion to accept the application submission request for consumer credit counseling. Second with Carolyn. Okay. Discussion. She's here to answer questions, so if you read the letter and what the staff is recommending, they're recommending that direct the executive director to reopen foundant for the application of the mental wellness through the financial hardship counseling of FY25 application, and allow consumer credit counseling back into the online foundant system for a specific time limited period this week, and upload the budget and click submission. That's the recommendation. Is there any discussion? No discussion, then you need to vote. It passed. Just do your thing.
Thank you so much.
All right. The next one is client services funds available to move, and I'm gonna turn to Leo if you would talk about the client funds to move that we have.
So we're not taking a vote today, we just wanted to show the board, as we are doing all year long, that we're looking for efficiencies in the budget, and that we're able to move around different, whether it's administrative expense line items, or different other line items, so that we can meet the needs of the client services. Currently, we just drafted a few things, again, depending on what the board decision is tonight, next month, we would bring, you know, specific decision memos to actually move some of these, because we'd be talking to the provider. But for example, Alexium Brothers Neurodevelopment Therapist, from May through July, there's $15,873 there. Alexium Brothers, again, this is all at Ascension, but they go by their applicant name. Their outpatient child and adolescent services, from June and July, we'd be able to collect, because it's not, hasn't been implemented yet, we'd be able to collect an additional $41,666 there. For Community Health Partnership, Breaking the Stigma, that program is not operational as of yet, and that was May through July. Again, we've already collected some of the dollars beforehand, but that would be, you know, $14,250. And then Northern NOI Recovery SUD Program, there could be $6,555 right now that we're seeing. Again, we would bring up, there's, these are definitely there, and there's additional dollars that we could bring up next month, but Melanie and I, depending on what the board decide, would be making contract addendums to these agencies' plans, taking those dollars so that they can be used elsewhere for these requests. So we just wanted the board to know that we do have dollars, this is minimally things that we found, and we have, Melanie, I continue to look at our administrative budget and making efficiencies there. So again, next month, we would officially vote on this, but we wanted the board to know that there are dollars in our budget.
Okay. So, just so you know, we do have money. I'm trying to, it won't, I hate this system, I hate it. Carolyn, did you click your, there?
Yeah, there we go. So when you say that you haven't asked them yet, so that $78,344?
Mm-hmm.
You have not asked those?
Those providers? No, because it takes, it's not asking them, we basically tell them that they're not using their dollars, and we need to do contract addendums. That's a lot of work on the staff's part, so depending on what the board decides, we will take, otherwise, these dollars come back to our fund balance anyways at the end of the year. So that's the process we go to. These agencies had just brought in these requests in the last few weeks, after I sent out an email talking about the August 31st deadline for budget reconciliations. So when the agencies started looking at their budget reconciliations, and looking at their fee-for-service utilizations, that's when we started getting those requests in, after I sent that email out. So it's not enough time for the staff to do contract addendums and do all that in the short time that we had, but based on the board's decision tonight, we will move forward with looking at making those contract addendums based on the decision tonight.
I guess I, if you could, and I apologize, because I thought this was all actually taken care of and already taken out of there. So just some clarification
Sure.
on the programs that are there, and what I don't want to do is tell people they have to give us money back, and then they need that money later, so like, at least
Sure. So the neurodevelopment therapist is not, hasn't been in place, they're doing some other things, but we can, we have the 15, this money would, the $15,873 will come back to our fund balance at the end of the year.
Is that a position that they don't have filled then, or?
They're doing some other things with the program, but they don't have the position, and those are the dollars that are, that will be coming back to us, that we've assessed by the end of the year.
Okay.
Same with the outpatient child and adolescent. We've already taken, that's a program that's not up and running, we've already done a contract addendum prior to that time, but we have June and July, and we'll probably have August, of more dollars that will be available when we do the contract addendum. So again, that's a program that's not up and running. Same with the Community Health Partnership, we've already done a contract addendum previously, but we have May and July, and we'll have August, so there'll be more dollars than that. Otherwise, those dollars come to fund balance, and that's why NIRC, you know, will talk with them with their SUD program, but that's, we'll definitely have plenty of dollars, because we'll also be including August in those contract addendums.
It's basically giving out money that we know we're gonna get at the end.
It's gonna come back to fund balance, those first three.
Right, I guess where I get really confused in this whole process is, you know, some of, the monthly occurrence on some, but then some don't utilize, I mean, there are some at zero, because their program is in a certain time of year, and, you know, so they're gonna use it all at one time. So differentiating between, well, you know, even though we kind of allocate it on a monthly basis, if they needed it, like, if this program was up and running, you know, could they use that money to get it up and running? That money that they built up over those few months that, you know, it's been delayed, let's say. So I just don't want to be taking money, you know, I think where I struggle with this whole thing is, we look at it at the beginning of the year, and I don't know who's, and I don't want to say anyone's really improperly budgeting, but budgeting isn't really there to some extent. Like, you know, you give us a dollar amount, and like, you either spend it.
But many times, I'll say this, Carolyn, when you're trying to protect clients and starting up a new program, it's hiring the person, it's training, it's getting them, and if they don't get it, and they've given money for it, that money comes back to us in fund balance. And plus, I've been on the other side with these agencies, if you say you're gonna serve 24, and 22 come in, you know, you don't get paid for that. So that, our fund balance has grown quite a lot, and I'd rather, as president, give it out to people that need it now, than wait till the fund balance is, I don't know, $600,000 at the end of the year.
Right, I just want to make sure at the same time that, you know, people are not like, oh, well, now because I didn't spend it in the last two months, I can't have it.
Well, they still have their contract.
They still have the contract.
They still have their contract, and they'll have their monthly payout based on that contract. So that, their contract still exists, so if it were to start tomorrow
You can't go, I
That would be able, they would be able to start the program.
So if they needed, so these are not programs, like, if they need to start up a new program, and they're just working on the, and then they'll need it. So, okay.
It's monthly, so if you don't use it that month, that's money set aside. You can't gather up all the money that you didn't use in six months and now use it.
I don't know, but there's some that do do that, to some extent. I mean, there's some programs that do do that.
Right.
Like summer programs, you know, there's a couple that are geared more towards the summer months.
Right, 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 but usually it's
But they're set up that way.
They're set up that way.
And is it in their contract that they kind of either use it or lose it?
They either use it or give it back to us, yeah.
Yeah, it's in the contract. And that's how, again, the fund balances have accrued in the past, and we've done a really good job the last couple of years, of, the agencies have done a phenomenal job at looking at their utilization, of doing what they're doing tonight, coming back to the board, asking for funds, so that we don't have those high fund balances, so that we can use the dollars appropriately. So, you know, these programs, again, that, the top three that are listed on that page, are programs that haven't materialized this year, so all those dollars will be coming back to fund balance.
I just, yeah, like, I just kind of took a step back when you said it's not done yet, and I don't want to be taking money from people
Right.
that are maybe expecting it.
Their contract will still be existing, so if they can get it started, which we are hoping they could, those dollars will be there to support them.
Are there any other questions on what Leo's presented? Chris, I'm trying to bring you up, okay?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the clarification, and I just want to put out there that I think what I'm sensing is some discomfort with giving away money that we don't actually have back yet. You're like, it's unexpended, but we have not yet
We haven't given it to them.
carried out, right. So we have it, but we have not, we're contractually obligated to do so until we modify the existing contracts, and so my preference is, we would do that in advance of giving additional money to additional, to agencies coming to request money from fund balance, when that's possible. And in some cases, you know, the need for funding could have been foreseen and requested, you know, ahead of now. We would have had that opportunity to go do those contract modifications, move that money into unallocated, you know, balance, and then be able to clearly, you know, devote it to these requests. So when we have the opportunity to do so, I think that's the preference.
Yeah, and we do have, and that's a good point, and the board feels more comfortable, I mean, the dollars are all there in our budget, so however you want to deal with it. If you feel more comfortable this evening in making your decisions, we, depending on what you decide for each of these requests, you could make, you know, we can make them retroactive, you know, start the contracts, you know, redo the contracts, and make them retroactive from when they need them. But we do have the dollars in our budget. We, you know, we do have those in our budget.
It's there, the money's there, and our job, as our lawyer said, is get the money and give it out to agencies, so we know the money, we have to trust our staff, and the money's there, and I can tell you the money's there. It's whether you want to give it out now, when they need it, or not. Okay? Lindsay, I'm coming to you. Okay?
I just wanted to talk about that, I know Mel's not here tonight. So typically, her process is kind of after Q1, you know, going into the next quarter, she's already looking for, you know, addendums to make, and thinking about the timeline of our staff, right? So they're trying to get any contract addendums done, sort of before the busy season that we're in right now, where they're needing to evaluate, you know, things for the next fiscal year. So it becomes a thing where it's done to the best of the staff's ability to do it, kind of in the mid-year range of our fiscal year. And then there are still opportunities like this that come through, that really, the thought process is, until there is a need, why would we make the staff do additional contract addendums? It's additional staffing hours on something. So yes, there's opportunity here to do this, and really, currently, we have a fair amount of unallocated dollars in client service balances anyways. This remaining, you know, amount will be what we need it to be. So I just kind of wanted to speak to that, that kind of that unallocated $228,914 is part of what they already did as a self-audit, and trying to get contract addendums back. And then like Leo said, there's also the administrative budget, that things come in throughout the year that are different than we thought, examples like our interest income is much bigger than we budgeted for. So all of those things sort of are reconciled mid-year, and then there are still these kinds of processes that unless we need to do it, they'll just naturally fall to fund balance, and there's now a reason to consider doing it, since there are requests. So just kind of wanted to share, and maybe if Leo has more to add about that, but that's sort of the process and why it's done mid-year, and maybe not at this point in the year, to just make it a practice of doing it monthly.
We've never had, yeah, we've never had a problem where we've given out money that they couldn't, that we couldn't, that another agency needed that we're taking from, it's never been that way, and I don't know, somebody who's on the phone, I can hear you. Okay? But we've never had a problem, I'm just telling you. There's fund balance, we want to give it out while we can, so. I'm gonna move on to Threshold's funding request. You have it in there? This is for the non-Medicaid Community Support Program. They're asking for $136,140.
Can I have just a first speech or a question?
You had mentioned that we're not gonna vote on that tonight, as far as the moving, but I mean, procedurally
On Thresholds?
No, on the 8C.
Oh, right.
And I, I mean, my preference, I don't know what everyone else's, but I just thought, if we could take 8C through 8G altogether, it just would make more sense.
Okay.
For me, I don't know what, how, I mean, you know, and I would like to actually, if we could move on that 8C, I mean, it doesn't say one way or the other on agenda, just so we could move on it. If we're comfortable, I mean, it just, it seems to make sense that it's all a big package of funds.
It is a big package, everybody's requesting funds.
So I would make a motion to include 8C through 8G together.
Okay.
And I'll even throw the motion out there for approval, and we can refine it, if you need it further refined, as we discuss.
Second, or discussion on that?
Second.
Second, Lindsay? Discussion? Adam?
No.
Let me get you up here. I got you, Amy, too. Adam? I'm hitting you. I turned you on, Amy, first, because I couldn't get to Adam. I'll get you, Adam, I promise.
My only question is, was there some logic to wanting to include August in, and that was the And that was the reason we were delaying it? So we don't have to do another round of contract addendums? But having asked that, I believe that all of the money that we've got still covers D through G. So we probably don't need to include August in there. I just was wondering if that was part of the logic of we know there's going to be more.
Right, we would probably include August when we did the contract addendums. So, you know, that's why we didn't have that originally as a, you know, motion action. Because that, those are things that, you know, we can be doing and we can bring it up next month. Or you could just add August to that, to the first three in your motion.
I'm, I'm fine either way because it does seem like we have enough money. I just wanted to ask that since we're so close to the end of the month.
There'll probably be more money for August. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Adam?
Okay, so my apologies for not bringing this up prior to the meeting, but there's a accounting error on the decision memo on page 117. If we have the current unallocated $228,914 and we allocate $136,140 to thresholds, that comes out to $92,774. I know it's only a dollar, but if we're counting dollars, I think that should be something we need to consider. Additionally, if we are going to approve through G, we have a deficit of $54,000. Uh, hang on, I lost my thing here, $54,225. So if we're going to approve D through F, we'll still have money. But if we include G, there'll be a deficit of $54,225. And if that's something we can vote on in August, if that money will be there, then maybe we should hold off on that because we're approving money we don't have at this point in time. Unless I misunderstood something here.
No, you're right.
I know we will, but we're spending money we don't have at this point in time. We know it's coming in. I know, I know it's, it's.
It hasn't gone out. That's the, so these programs, these, it's just paper. These, this money hasn't gone out.
Understandably so. My concern is that.
Do we have the 54?
The $54,000 is listed in the decision memo as a negative balance on the remaining unallocated money. And I, for one, am not comfortable allowing that to occur at this point in time because of what other board members have suggested that if, if it's not there, it's not there. You know, we're not a credit agency and I don't know if we're going to be able to come up with $54,000. God forbid something happens.
We have $7 million in reserves.
But that's not what this reads. That's the problem I'm having. So I'm just, it's just a comment and a, I'll leave it at that.
Greg, I tried to turn you on. You're on next, Lindsay. Okay.
Yeah, I don't understand all the puts and takes, but if we're confident that we'll have the money if we were going to wait till August, can we amend the motion to say contingent upon? So the money doesn't go out unless we have it, but we don't have to wait for the decision?
What Adam is saying is he would approve 8A through F, 8A through F, and the other $54,000.
Yeah, I understand what he's saying and so the unlucky person that happens to be last. Can we?
What I'm saying is, yeah.
Can we go back to Carolyn's idea of approving the package, but make it contingent upon?
Money.
The money actually being there that we are confident is going to be there.
And Leo's saying it's there, so, but I get what Adam is saying, too. It's not in the memo. Okay.
So it was a question. Is that?
Yeah, we can.
And Adam, I guess I'd ask if you'd be okay with that sort of approach.
Contingent upon that, I have no problem. But based on what we have in front of us, that's the contention that I have.
Okay.
I feel strongly in both ways. I like the idea of giving the money where it's needed, but being fiscally responsible to not spend what we don't have.
We're telling you we do. Lindsay, I hit your thing.
Yeah, I just wanted to make some comments. So our fund balance is quite healthy at this point. And due to the way that the property tax to sales tax conversion is going to go, we're going to end up with a large increase in our fund balance. The money is absolutely there. So I mean, I think what we're talking about is a line item of like our current budget versus our whole pot of money. So I guess what I want to say is, you know, in the absolute worst-case scenario where somehow the agencies that were making contract addendums say, oh, my gosh, you know, actually, we used all that money or neat, you know, and we feel good about it, right? That, you know, we would still have an option to, you know, try to request our fund balance dollars to put towards things that we've already thought were, you know, needed, such as everything listed through G. So I'm in favor of doing this because I do think that it's just a matter of some basic accounting, especially some of these positions and the amount of money that are in them. The $40,000 one, by adding August into it, is going to put us well and above what is already an overage that they're anticipating. So with the requests coming in and just kind of the shorthand things that Leo listed, we're already more than we need to say yes to everything on here. So to me, it's, I would love to say yes through August, but I don't think we need that contingent upon. The money will be there. It's just which pot of money we're going to grab it from. And she would come back to us and say, hey, we have to go after this in a different pot of money. So I just want to remind everybody there's, there is going to be an excessive amount of money. And we want to aim for no money to the fund balance this year and to serve the people in a timely fashion. So I don't want to see anything get, you know, potentially delayed.
So I understand, and I will call on you, Amy, that the motion is approving 8D through 8G.
Can I just clarify when I weigh on a motion and if I answer a question?
Wait a second, let me.
And if not, I can weigh. Oh, okay, thank you. Because actually, what I was including was C to make those adjustments. So what Adam's referring to is that original dollar amount that's in the budget, the $228,914. And that's what was being deducted in the, in then D through G. It was not including that additional $78,344, which my intent on my motion was to actually include that. So it doesn't actually come out in the negative 54,225. It actually comes into a positive of, and I was just doing the math, is, you know, right around $23,000 or whatever. It ends up being extra. That will actually, the way I made the motion, we'd actually be in the positive and not in the negative with those transferring. And that wasn't even including August. If we want to put August in there, I'm happy to add that to the motion.
And Carolyn, I think that's, that's a good idea. But the same thing that Lindsay's talking about, too, is that, you know, flexibility with staff for us to make changes and add not only August, but for example, we might not want an IRC. So that's where making a motion on C, I think, is difficult because we would like some flex, staff flexibility to bring up the contract addendums next month to the board. And it'll be more than, more than these dollars. So I don't know how you want to move forward with that.
Yeah, and I don't know either, because I guess that goes back to my initial concern of, you know, getting back to where Adam is. You know, that's why, are we putting, or Chris commented. I'll let Amy comment, but are we putting the cart before the horse if we can't make those adjustments? So I don't know.
Okay, Amy?
My points have pretty much been made. And I feel very confident that the money is there and would like to not delay getting these funds to our agencies.
Thank you. So we have a motion for 8D through G. And we have a second. We've had discussion.
Wait, wait, wait.
Is that a motion?
No, I didn't hear. Yeah, I don't think that was.
Oh, okay, I, okay, I'm sorry. We've approved the other ones, that's why. Okay, I need a motion for that.
The current motion is for C through G. That's what Carolyn had a motion for C through G, and there's a second for that. That's what you need to act on.
Read that again.
Your current motion is for 8C through G. So it's for this, that was not for action. So to move those funds all the way through G. That's the current motion, and there's been a second.
Okay.
So it needs to be either voted or amended.
Okay.
I have a quick question. If that motion fails, can we go back and do D through G?
G, because I don't want to not give anybody any money because we're uncomfortable with C. So I want some clarity. Like, I'm fine voting yes for C, but if no one else does, I don't want our providers to miss out because we're all not sure what C's doing, so.
I think you have, I mean, honestly, you have my word that the money's there. You have Lindsay's, you have Leo's. We're telling you, with the tax dollars and the revenue this year, the money is there.
Okay, so I understand we're going to vote on C through G and just see what happens.
Unless you change the.
Unless you change the motion. Carolyn?
So when I made the motion, I was under the impression, because they asked the question, if that was the adjustments that were going to be made. You know, and I understand that August is a variable. That's not included in that, that motion. And I left that open. I mean, I, those numbers are already there. So I guess I'm not understanding why those would need to change.
They don't need to change. We would just want to do the contract addendum. We, we do contract addendums normally through August 31st.
So I, I am fine adding in.
August.
August as needed by staff.
Okay, okay, all right.
I don't, yeah, so I am fine leaving August as, you know, at the purview of staff, so. Okay, then we're all good. I will adjust my motion as such. Are you good with that? Okay, and then whoever seconded it, if you're fine? Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion, then we'll vote.
Do you want to have discussion on each of those requests?
No, she's asking you to go. No.
No? Nobody? On each of those requests? Okay.
It's all together. Okay, passed. For Pioneer and Service Inc. Okay. With all that, we have members comment. Does any member have a comment? Okay. As soon as I can find you. Okay, here. Show me where Lindsay is. I hate this system. Okay, you're on. Oh, no, you're not on.
Okay. Two things I wanted to make a comment on. First and foremost, I hope that everybody will join me. I will be at the International Overdose Awareness Day event this coming Saturday on the Woodstock Square from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. If you have never been, it's an incredibly moving event where members of the community that have lost loved ones to overdose come in remembrance. And there's kind of a positive resource fear going on. And usually, multiple members from the recovery community, local recovery homes, things like that are there. So I hope to see some of you there if you have the time to do it. Second, I will, I'd like to share that there's been a, an interesting article that came out that looked at insurance companies and their treatment of behavioral health providers. And this article kind of went big as multiple people spoke out about the insurance companies kind of misuse of fierce auditing as a way to discourage people to be in-network. And now they're moving to different, kind of malicious attacks on out-of-network providers. So where an out-of-network provider, and I just want to share this as an, you know, an explanation. If you come and see me as a therapist as an out-of-network provider, I say, give me $150, here's a piece of paper, a receipt. You're going to go work with your own insurance company to get reimbursed for that. The insurance companies are now requiring full medical record audits, including everything from your first intake to every billing thing that you need. And they are then delaying payment. And then if that's not effective enough, they do what's called prepayment review, which is an insurance company telling a person who's not contracted with them that they have to still get their permission to do this if their customer wants to get that reimbursement. So the reason I speak about this is I know that Leo will do a good job of sending us lots of wonderful legislation where we can reach out to our state legislators. Illinois actually has a decent reputation for putting in Illinois laws that protect us from insurance companies doing things to our, you know, substance use providers, our mental health providers. We have parity for telehealth. There are some states where insurances are now not approving telehealth or saying, hey, you can go and get a telehealth appointment, but we're going to pay you 20 bucks instead of 120 bucks for it. So I just want to advocate a little bit for how important our advocacy is and spreading that kind of information. I will send that article out for you guys. Well, I'll send it to Bridget. She'll send it to all of us. But I just wanted to speak on the importance of our legislation and our advocacy because the state of Illinois is doing a lot to protect our providers from things that are actually happening in other states. So just wanted to speak on that.
Thank you. Anybody else have any member comments? Amy?
I'm next. Okay.
How do I get to her?
All right, I visited, since the last meeting, four agencies in no particular order, WarpCor, Family Health Partnership, Rosecrans, and Drug Court. I won't go into details because I know a lot of people are more familiar with those programs than I am, but I'm so deeply appreciative of everyone's time. I learned so much. It was very eye-opening. There are only a couple things that I wanted to mention. One is that I've been very impressed by how all agencies will have very good things to say about numerous other agencies. And that really talks to how deeply connected the community is. I visited Family Health Partnership just today, and they said, as deeply as connected as we try to be, even we don't know everything that's going on, which I think tags on to Lindsay's point just a little bit around the advocacy. And you can kind of never stop sharing information because as new programs come up or as programs shift or as staff changes, clearly, folks want to work together and recognize that health, prevention, mental health, it's, it's all very tightly interlinked. And they try to not have competition, but to be very open about seeing the entire scope of the problem and referring folks to the appropriate resources as they can. So I wanted to call that out because that, I think, is just tremendous and is not something, I know that now we have the no wrong door policy and that's somewhat always been in place, but it's something they really are truly living. So when we have things like outsiders come in and say, maybe y'all should work together, I'm like, they're working together. They are clearly very, very closely working together. Just a couple other callouts. WarpCor, I'm not going to say specific numbers, but I know there's a couple of folks here. But I remember you sharing that, because you're a new provider with us, that you have really tripled the impact, I believe, not even all the way through the year. So that is incredible that you've been able to go far beyond what you had thought or, you know, thought you were going to do in terms of prevention. And then one thing that I always ask, what do you want me to take back to the board? Rosecrans mentioned, you know, something in the scope of holistic care that we seem to be missing is childcare. And I know that there's not much we can do about that, but they talk about when families come in, because there's medical, there's prevention. If a mom is sitting there or a parent or anyone with their young child, they can't have as effective a mental health session as if they had somebody that could step in and watch that child, even on a volunteer basis or something like that. And so I said, oh, that is, that's very good for me to know. So I said, I would mention it in my comments, and that's what I'm doing. And just thank you, everyone, for your time.
Anybody else have any member comment? You do, Mike? Okay.
I thought Greg, Greg was next.
Oh, Greg.
You already had him.
Yeah, I just want to give a little bit of a shout out to Abby Nicholas. I had sent her on that neurodiversity and hiring article to a few folks, and she was one of them. And I'd asked her, how might we promulgate this concept in McHenry County? And she put me in contact with Tom Faber. in contact with Tom Faber of McHenry County Workforce. And he thought he had a really great idea. We're going to meet with Pat Callis from the Shaw Center next week and start to brainstorm a little bit about possibly offering a workshop or a course, you know, something to educate companies on hiring, you know, interviewing and hiring neurodivergent folks. And one idea is having some folks from Options and Advocacy or Alexander, you know, one of the people that specialize in autism come in and role-play in a job interview. You know, how might you interview differently? Because the, the data show that once they get past the, the interview, they can be just fantastic employees. So.
That's true.
But they just don't present well in traditional settings often. So, anyway, something I'm excited about. I think the best part of my week just happened yesterday, meeting with Tom.
Good, thank you. Mike, I know, I'm coming to you.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick comments. Insurance companies spend millions of dollars trying to not pay us. That's, what they've done, it, what the goal is, the end game, is to make us halt cash practices and people not use their benefits. That may be obvious or may not be so obvious to others, but they are in business to make money, not write checks. Secondly, I met with Amy from the police, from the sheriff's department on our police social worker program. And one of the anticipated and now experienced difficulties is finding qualified people, keeping qualified people. And it comes back to, it comes back to how much we're able to pay. Northbrook, for example, is starting social workers at over $100,000 a year. I, I think our, our cap is under 80. So it's pretty obvious, you know, you drive a little ways, you make a lot more money. It was almost deja vu to 30 years ago why I ended up going east. But it was, it was a good breakfast, got cut short because that's how busy they are. And the entire time we sat there, she multitasked and was dealing with a case in northwestern McHenry County, a fatality and a family trying to deal with it. But it was, it was a good meeting. It was productive. And I'm sure there'll be a lot more discussion moving forward. But it's an amazing program. They're, they're doing amazing work.
Good. Yeah, Amy's a good person.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay. Well, then we will adjourn. I asked for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? I see you in September after.